Meeting of the Delaware County Board of Commissioners. Would you please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm Barb Lewis, Board President, and to my left is our Vice President Jeff Benton, our Administrator Tracy Davies, our Deputy Administrator Dawn Houston, and our Deputy Administrator and General Counsel Eric Hostetler, our Clerks Jennifer Wallraven and Randy Wilson. We can begin.
Resolution number 25-497, in the matter of approving electronic record of proceedings from regular meeting held June 30th, 2025.
So moved.
Second discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 25-497, Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill is absent this morning. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
We do have two people for public comment today. We will start with Mary Ann. And she'll introduce herself.
Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If you could just give us your name and address.
Sure. My name is Mary Ann Derosha, and I live in Lantern Chase on Marblewood Drive, and my backyard butts up to the property that is requested for annexation this morning.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to say how much I enjoy living here in Delaware. I moved here from North Carolina, originally from Youngstown area, but I was in North Carolina for 20 years, and I relocated back. Both my children and their families live in New Albany. And when I was choosing where to move, I started at Canal Winchester, Johnstown, Pataskoala, Galena. I did a 160, but I chose Delaware because of the charm of this city. It's welcoming. I feel safe here. It's thriving, but it's also a small-town feeling. And being an outdoors person, I especially like having the parks nearby and also the State Park where I go kayaking and hiking. But I'm concerned because of the growth that is happening so quickly. I can see through the field the apartments that are growing, the additions of Park View. Now, I'm all for building and expanding to a point, but it's within a few miles that we have five developments simultaneously growing presently. And with the addition of the property that is being asked to be annexed, it could house almost over 1,100 possible homes, which would be thousands of more people. And I'm concerned that we are growing much quicker than what our city can absorb. Plus, I'm concerned about losing the charm of this city. I know that we're adapting, but let's be planful in doing so. So I'm asking for your consideration of what effect does this have on the entire city and its residents? There's a saying that, you know, when people sell, the sellers aren't going to look back. The developers are going to build and not look back. But the residents who remain here are the ones who are going to have to deal with all this possible congestion, lack of accommodating all the rapid growth. So I'm asking for your wisdom and foresight in saying, just because we can, should we? So thank you for your time. Do you have any questions for me?
I don't believe so. We take this up next week.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We have one other public speaker this morning. Chris?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Chris Strachey. I actually am Mary Ann's next-door neighbor on Marblewood Drive. My backyard also is immediately adjacent to the property proposed for annexation. Mary Ann and I have talked ad nauseam about this issue and plans behind our homes, and we came up with some shared thoughts, and I'm going to expand on some of what she's already discussed here, with some other, I think, key pieces of insight for your consideration when you're deciding how to move forward with this issue. Since 2010, Delaware County has experienced significantly higher-than-average population growth, 2.35% 2023 compared to the national average of 0.29%, so it's considerably larger. And it is that sustained growth that has led many of the constituents in this immediate area to have shared concerns about the residential development outpacing the sustainability and availability of necessary public services, utilities, and infrastructure. As Mary Ann mentioned, there are five communities within three miles of the property proposed for annexation that total over 1,100 homes, with 452 of them and two communities immediately adjacent next to the property. And the capacity for development in those areas, as she said, exceeds 1,000 homes if they are to develop in line with the size of the properties we've already experienced. And there are several key impacts that we want you to consider, which include, and we have made copies available for you, a summary of all of my notes here, if I can just race through them. The nature reserves in the area, the trees and forestry in the woods that people enjoy leisurely, the wildlife that is supported by these that residents in the communities enjoy, the infrastructure that we know has been a conversation ad nauseam by many people in the area, including the capacity for traffic, this repair that we see in our roads and the struggle that we have with repairing them because of the traffic congestion. And we know that officials have estimated $265 million investments into the basic infrastructure to accommodate Delaware's sustained growth. However, those projects lead us all the way into year 2030. In addition, with these being primarily family homes, it raises a lot of concern to those who are familiar that we only have five elementary schools, one middle school, and one high school enrolling, 5,600 students. And so if we're adding just in this immediate three miles, almost 1,000 more family homes, how many more students does that put into the existing schools training an already strained school system? Also, the availability of commerce, including groceries. The Kroger on Hough is one of the only grocery stores in that immediate area for those individuals living in that proximity to shop at. And as Mary Ann mentioned, maintaining the charm of Delaware. And so we only ask, not that we dissent entirely to the concept of annexing this to self, but that we give consideration to the appropriate time to do so. Is it appropriate now?
Okay.
So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. And you've given us some written comments, too, so we'll be able to take a look at that, too. Thank you. Okay. We'll proceed.
Item number three, resolution number 25-498, in the matter of approving purchase orders and announced certificates of payments of warrants in batch number CM APR 0703 and memo transfers in batch number MT APR 0703.
So moved.
Second discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 25-498. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 25-500, in the matter of acknowledging receipt of an annexation petition from Agent for the petitioner Molly Gwynn, attorney at law, requesting annexation of 1.443 acres of land in Orange Township to the City of Columbus.
So moved.
Second discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 25-500. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 25-501, in the matter of approving a supplemental appropriation.
So moved.
Second discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners. Justin Abbe, Director of Finance. This request has been submitted due to an increase in employee participation in the flex spending accounts. Generally, we budget about $450,000 a year, and there was an additional $110,000 elected for 2025.
Okay. Questions?
Vote please. Vote on motion 25-501. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
For item number seven, we have Katie White, the Executive Director of Central Ohio Area on Agency Street, and she has a presentation and update for the Board this morning.
Thank you, Katie. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm also joined by my colleague Grant Ames.
Welcome.
Just get myself situated here. Thank you so much for having us. This is my first time in this building, though I've spent a lot of time at Bunn's and leading some focus groups and support groups in churches when I was with the Alzheimer's Association, but this building is beautiful. Happy to be here.
Thank you.
All righty. So this morning, we are here to discuss a little bit of a background on who COAA is and what we do, and then to really propose to you and outline some changes that we are working on that we feel are necessary for the region and sustainability for those we serve, which are older adults and people with disabilities. Our mission at COAA is to inform and support people as they navigate the experience of aging and disability. And our vision is that individuals and families have access to the information and services that they need to age with dignity and independence. We are one of 12 area agencies on aging in Ohio and one of 622 across the United States. Every U.S. citizen is served by an area agency on aging, and COAA, as you can see here, serves eight counties in the central Ohio region. While area agencies on aging are mandated through the Older Americans Act to provide these core services, each area agency on aging is also able to react to local needs and to modify their services to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our community. I'll say AAA from here on out, just to save myself on some time. The four main functions that area agencies on aging in Ohio do are to fund community-based services for older adults. And so what this looks like is an amount of federal funds that come into the state, which are then given to each of the area agencies on aging. And then we actually fund services to each county. So in Delaware County, we work very closely with SourcePoint, and two SourcePoint individuals are here today with us, Amelia and Bob. So some of those funds go to home-delivered meals, to some caregiving services, but essentially we bring in the funds and then partner with the focal points in each of our eight counties to deliver the services. We also provide extensive information, assistance, and education about aging issues and programs. I'll leave some documents with you that go over, you know, 30,000 phone calls and connections to services coming in annually. And those are some of those general questions. Do I qualify for Medicaid? What types of services? And then oftentimes, again, referring and connecting folks back to the county that they live in to make sure that those local resources are utilized. We also do a lot of advocacy on behalf of older adults and people with disabilities, whether that's at the local level, the state level, the federal level, ensuring that older adults and people with disabilities are at the forefront, that the funding that is allocated to them remains steady. In a dream world, increases, but at this point, we're just trying to make sure that individuals have the choice to age where they want to with the services that they need. And then somewhat unique to area agencies on aging in Ohio is that we administer Medicaid waiver programs. And this means individuals that would otherwise meet the financial and level of care requirements to be in a nursing facility can opt to receive those services at home. And COAA does the assessments of individuals, gathering information on what they qualify for and what they need, and then we do the ongoing case management for those services as well. A bit of context about the history that is important for today is that we were established in 1974, and we had 10 individuals on staff. And really, our main focus then was to take in federal funds and to administer those funds out. Over the years, there have been some significant changes, like in 1990 when the Passport Program came about, and that's when we got into this in-home case management services, a really critical piece to the continuum of care for people in our region. In 2014, we then added another program, which was called MyCareOhio. We were part of a demonstration project for the last 10 years, hoping to prove the concept that we can save funding and meet individuals' unique needs and preferences by administering these home and community-based case management waiver services. Now, most important for today is that this demonstration project through the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid must end 12/31/25. And in Ohio, the Ohio Department of Medicaid has decided that it has been successful and that we will roll a new version of this program out across the state. So from only being eligible and available in some counties to being available across the state. And what that means for area agencies on aging is that we will be directly contracting through some risk-based contracts with managed care organizations. And so it's really going to shift how we do our work. It will shift our revenue and budget projections. And most importantly, we wanted to make sure that we were ready and prepared for the efficiency and effectiveness that these types of contracts will require. So we brought in a strategic consultant who has a lot of experience in Medicare and Medicaid plans, and they wrote a strategic plan for success for us. So they went through a really robust process of not only looking at our processes at COAA, but also working with our peers across the state, the other AAA directors. They spoke to Ohio Department of Medicaid, Ohio Department of Aging, CMS, went to the national level, really to try to see how COAA is operating now and what we need to do to be prepared for these new contracts that are set to launch January 1st of 26. There were a number of recommendations, and we can certainly send you the full report if you'd like to peruse it in your free time, but the most important is that we essentially were left with a really critical decision, which is for us to be able to successfully deliver on what the requirements are for the new grants, we really need to make sure that our policies, our practices, our standards are in line with our peers across the state. And what was found is that our current makeup, which is the fact that we are part of Columbus Rec and Parks, we are a program of Rec and Parks instead of a standalone entity like most of our peers, is limiting the efficiency and effectiveness of how we're able to do our business. So that brings us to what we're here today to discuss, and in a moment, I'll have my colleague Grant Ames come up to the podium. But what we're hoping to do is to form a regional council of governments. And what that would mean is that we are transitioning out from underneath Columbus Recreation and Parks as a program into our own standalone regional entity. Grant will go into a little bit of how that's done and why we chose a cog, but we really believe firmly that in order to continue to be able to meet the demands of our region and to truly be regional, that this, our cog, is the right way to go. So I'll pause and wait for questions, and then I'll have Grant come up and finish the slideshow.
Mr. Benton?
As Katie knows, welcome, Katie and Grant. I participated in the study, the task force that MORPC put together to study this issue and getting a COAA out from under the Parks and Recreation Department of the City of Columbus, which makes sense. You know, when it was formed in '74, I think it made sense to stick it somewhere, and that's what they did. And, you know, fast forward, now you have 400 employees and thousands and thousands of clients. So anyway, I'm very familiar with the process and don't really have any questions for you at this point, but I don't know.
I did wonder how it got into Parks and Rec.
So when they were initiating area agencies on aging, they gave first rate of refusal to government. And so at the time, we wanted to make sure, from what I understand, Mel Dodge wanted to make sure that something was initiated here, and so he said, yep, we'll do it at the city. And, you know, it's not to say we don't do great work as part of the city, but to be ready for the next level, it is time.
Sure. Yeah. It just doesn't work anymore.
Yes. And I just want to say thank you so much, Commissioner Benton, for all of your work in supporting the AdHoc Task Force and for your support in making sure we could be here today. So I will have Grant come up, and then if there are any additional questions, I'll come back.
Fran Ryan was also a participant in the task force co-chair along with me, and she was able to give us a historical perspective on that very issue. How did it end up in the Parks and Recs and, you know, the mission and so on in the beginning?
Yes. She's a huge advocate for us, luckily for us. All things aging do need to go through Fran Ryan, and luckily for us, she believes in this. So thank you.
She's done some great work. I've heard that name for so long.
Yeah. She was actually the city council member that helped make the decision to create COAA in 1974.
Oh, okay. And Mel Dodge was very forward-thinking, too, so I could see where, you know, he wanted to make sure that this was included, so he probably stepped up and made sure. But thank you. Welcome.
Hi. I'm Grant. I'm our Government and Strategic Initiatives Manager at COAA. I wanted to speak a little bit about, just to back up. So there are 12 area agencies in Ohio. 10 of them are standalone nonprofit organizations that operate similar to a nonprofit and take in those federal funds through the same programming. One of them is a council of governments, so that is partially where we're coming up with the idea for a council of government. And then, of course, COAA being the outlier, that we're part of city government locally. It sounds like you fully understand, but for the most part, our concern is that the City of Columbus is making a lot of decisions for the outer counties. We ultimately are running contracts, funding everything through Columbus City Council and the mayor's office, and while it's working for us, we don't really feel like that's appropriate for the region, that those services and funding are going to our outer counties, and they should have input and say in how we're doing that process and what those services are going toward and how that funding is being spent. So this was our thought of how to maintain that government status. We're used to being government, being part of the City of Columbus, and a council of governments is a state function, very similar to MORPC, but whereas MORPC is more focused on planning, a council of governments is really focused on service provision across county lines. So think of, I was just talking with someone about, I think we've talked about it, in Akron and Summit County, they actually do their dispatching services across county lines, all from one place, and that's a council of governments that was created for that function. Buckeye Hills is our partner, AAA in southeastern Ohio. They're a council of governments that does something very similar, where they're doing service provision across their 10 counties to provide those services to older adults and people with disabilities in that area. So that's most of the reason that we thought that this was the right route to go. I'll speak a little bit about some of the other things that were really driving points for us. Again, I talked about that regional accountability, making sure our counties and our county commissioners had a seat at the table for those conversations, and we're engaged in our work at COAA. Transparency, we're used to public records laws, we're used to public budgeting, all that comes with that, and really feel strongly that that's an important component as we move into this index phase, so make sure that we can maintain that and that public trust that comes along with it. Something else that comes with government, our employees are enrolled in Obers, so they're all have access to those government benefits and not wanting to upset the apple cart too much. This is a route for them to be able to maintain that participation without having to go through any process. We've already had conversations with Obers that they are comfortable with government-to-government transfer of those employees, and there wouldn't be anything that would go into it for them to make sure that they can maintain their retirement benefits and not have any disruption to that as they move forward. And then ultimately, we are designated by the Ohio Department of Aging. We've had conversations with them. They're fully in support of this decision. They've actually been working with us on how do we split up some of our grants and contract periods to make sure that we can comply with their deadlines? And they've communicated to us in a letter that they're comfortable with this transition. But ultimately, their goal would be for us to maintain that government status, knowing how important that government accountability, that public trust is to them as an agency and to us as an agency. They're fully in support of transitioning that designation seamlessly, but the government portion was something that they really wanted to make sure that we were mindful of and continuing to move forward with. Any questions on that before I move into next steps?
No, I certainly appreciate the fact that we have a say-so.
Yeah. Well, that's great.
So thank you.
So we've talked a little bit about this. I know that we've shared the bylaws as well as the agreement that the counties would need to enter into. Of course, these are our eight counties in the central Ohio region. This is the apportionment that was determined. So the way that the council of governments would be structured is each of the counties would have one council seat, for lack of a better term. So that would be the legislative body that would meet annually, they would be kind of like the overall oversight. And then those counties would appoint ongoing Board of Directors members based on population distribution. So all of these, or these director appointments are based on population listings that are listed in the bylaws. So you'll be able to see the specifics of that. And these will be the folks that'll operate very similarly to a nonprofit board. They'll meet quarterly to approve spending, they'll be able to review budgets, be able to make policy decisions on behalf of the organization. They'll operate very similarly to a nonprofit board in that way. And then we'll have a chair, vice chair, and a secretary that will be able to meet ad hoc as needed if there's a new contract that comes up, if there are times that, there are times that the state of Ohio says, hey, we have this leftover funding that needs to be spent somewhere, you need to spend it in the next three weeks. We have to move very quickly, and so this group will be able to bring together relatively quickly to act on behalf of that Board of Directors. So we feel like this structure engages all of our counties in a way that allows them to have a lot of say at the table while allowing for some growth. Of course, we just heard this morning, we're preparing for that growth of the older adult population in Delaware County as well, and really seeing that growth is going to allow more engagement, more folks to be able to be at the table for this, for these conversations. So a few important things I just wanted to highlight as well. So participation in the regional council has no cost to the county. There are membership dues for other organizations like this, but COAA is fully self-sustaining. We only receive less than 1% of our annual budget from the City of Columbus, and ultimately, that funding is just used for a federal match, for the federal dollars that we bring in. Each of them needs a portion that has a local match to it. So we can figure that out in other ways. So ultimately, we didn't feel it was appropriate to charge the counties anything, to have any dues associated with this creation. It would be something that we would bring up in a few years, in 2028, and then the Board of Commissioners, so the folks that would be the council that is made up of votes from the Commissioners, would then be able to discuss that and determine if it's something that is needed, then we can discuss that further and see what the specific amount would be. But ultimately, it would be up to the Commissioners to make that decision. It wouldn't be something that would be dictated upon you in any way. And then the other thing I wanted to highlight was that there won't be any liability for the county. We'll be a standalone organization that will have our own insurances. We are an employer that is on term contracts, so if we lose grant funding, ultimately, our employees are aware of that, and then we will need to readjust budgets based on what that grant looks like. We won't be supplementing any of our budget off the county or anything like that. You won't be financially at risk for being part of the council of governments. Ultimately, we'll be a standalone agency that does a lot of that work, other than the oversight portion. Ultimately, we'll be responsible for all the liability aspects of it and then the financial aspects of it as well.
That sounds good, too.
So as we're kind of moving forward, so over the next few weeks, we're going to be meeting with a lot of the county commissions across the region. So we had a meeting with Fayette County a few weeks ago. We're going to be in Licking County later this week. So excited to be out here and discussing this plan with the county commissioners. And then we're going to be asking you to enter into a resolution, to enter into the agreement, to join the council of governments. And then there'll be another resolution that's attached to that to appoint a member to that council. So we're moving relatively quickly. As you heard in our kind of timeline, 2026 is our drop-dead date, and I'm sure you can understand, we have a lot of things to do to get us to a place where we're operational as an organization, standalone. We are very standalone from the City of Columbus now. We have our own IT department, we do our own HR, we have a lot of those functions already in place as a standalone department within the city. So we feel like we can do it relatively quickly, but we're asking for folks to move fast for us so that we can start to do some of these business processes. City Council goes on recess in August as well, so we need to kind of pull some money down to the new organization before they go on their summer recess. the city of Columbus now, we have our own IT department, we do our own HR, we have a lot of those functions already in place as a standalone department within the city. So we feel like we can do it relatively quickly, but we're asking for folks to move fast for us so that we can start to do some of these business processes. City council goes on recess in August as well, so we need to kind of pull some money down to the new organization before they go on their summer recess, so that we can do those processes relatively quickly. So that's the speed of the timeline and you'll hopefully see that resolution, I believe next week was the plan, or maybe in the next few weeks.
I'm sure we will.
Yeah, I think the plan is, you know, right now, to present those two resolutions next Monday.
Great.
The fourteenth, so.
Where is your main office now?
Our main office is located on South High Street in Columbus, so right where 270 hits South High Street, so all the way on the south side. As you can see, we have Pickaway County and Fayette County as well, so Fayette County is the only one of our counties that isn't connected to Franklin County, so I think in part of that was to be close to them. We're actually in the old Bob Evans headquarters, if you know where that is, on South High Street, that's where our location is. Our hope is with this as well, in the next few years, to do some satellite offices out in the counties. We really work closely with our focal points, but we have staff that lives throughout the region, they're traveling to people's homes throughout the region, and I think having home bases in each of those counties is going to be a valuable step in the future for us so that they have somewhere to go as they're transversing all of our counties and the entire region, meeting people in their homes. I think having those home bases would be a great idea.
Sure, boy, that's great. Any other comments, Commissioner?
Yeah, just kind of a general observation, as we worked through this process and had the task force meetings, from my standpoint, the main issues were legal liability, financial risk, and I think we've addressed those, you know, your presentation obviously covered those. You know, is there any financial exposure to our county, and I think the other seven counties would have the same reaction, is what's our financial risk, what's our legal risk, and I think we've pretty well covered that, so I feel good about that. I do still caution everyone on transition issues. These transitions are complicated, they're complex, they're difficult, you'll have a whole bunch of surprises, I'm sure, as you go through it, but you know, the will is there and the mission makes sense, so I think, you know, we'll be able to get through it. But again, and I also want to recognize Bob Corrox, our very own, Bob Corrox is the resident of Delaware County and used to run Source Point and has significant experience in AAAs, both transitioning as well as running in other areas, but Bob's been a big help through this process as well, as a subject matter expert, for me in particular, we've had extensive conversation about what all does this mean and so on, he's been very helpful, so Bob is here today, so I want to thank him for participating as well. I didn't really have any other questions.
No, I mean, I just thank you for working on this, too, and I'm so happy that you could come in today, give us an overview, and we'll be passing, well, we'll see, we'll have a resolution before us, and then we'll discuss it, but I certainly think, I mean, you don't really have a choice here, you've got to move ahead.
It's time, past time.
Right, right, exactly, no, we're very, very, very happy to have some say-so, as I mentioned before, and really appreciate your coming in. I would ask Bob if he has any comments to make, if he would like to come to the podium. With your expertise, Bob, and the great respect we have for you, I'm so glad that you've been involved, too, in this.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Lewis, Commissioner Benton, for your work as well on this. I hadn't planned to say anything, but since you asked. At Source Point, we worked very closely with Katie and her team over the years and have a great deal of respect for them, great crew, they have supported us since the inception of our organization, provided lots of great expertise and funding, and so this is real important for Delaware County that we, as they go through this evolution, that we end up with a similar, good, efficient, effective organization, and it is time, it has been kind of an outlier in Ohio, and so I'm real happy, this hasn't happened, I think, because it's, you know, it's worked fairly well, and this kind of transition, as Commissioner Benton says, it is difficult, and there are going to be surprises, and there's lots of work ahead, and I give Katie a lot of credit for taking this task on, it's overdue, and it will benefit older adults here in Delaware County as well as the entire region. So I appreciate your time in inviting Katie here and Grant, and we, I as a citizen, am in full support of this, and I encourage your support and endorsement, and I will work real hard to continue to support this and ensure a smooth transition, so thank you so much.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
All right, item number eight, resolution number 25-502, in the matter of approving the grant agreement and funding application by and between the State of Ohio Department of Youth Services and the Delaware County Board of County Commissioners on behalf of Delaware County Juvenile Court.
So moved.
Second discussion.
Good morning, Karen Wadkins, fiscal coordinator for the juvenile court. This is the annual submission to the Department of Youth Services, it funds seven different programs that we have over at the juvenile court, the ongoing work that we're doing and the programs, we're looking at a restorative justice program this year, it supports a total of fourteen individuals, and we are looking at an increase of support from the Department of Youth Services, moving our allocation to $1,057,000 this year.
Okay, any questions? Vote please.
Vote on motion 25-502, Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolution number 25-503, in the matter of declaring personal property obsolete, unfit, or not needed for public use in the intent of selling such property, be it internet auction or disposal of property of no value.
So moved.
Second discussion.
Good morning, John Melvin, Director of Facilities. As noted, we have a list of mainly Ford Explorers that are ready to be sold on gov deals.
Okay, vote please.
Vote on motion 25-503, Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Resolution number 25-504, in the matter of approving a one-time authorization of amended limits to a procurement card for a regional sewer.
So moved.
Second discussion.
Morning Commissioners, Eric McPeak with the Regional Sewer District, this is for one-time authorization over the limit for credit card purchase for a piece of testing equipment that we have a quote for from another company we work with, and we found out if we purchased straight from the manufacturer, we'll save $15,000 minus tariffs, which we still need to see what that ends up being, and the reason is, we had to purchase with a credit card, the company doesn't accept checks, and our software at the county is not set up for international transactions, so.
Okay, vote please.
Vote on motion 25-504, Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Resolution number 25-505, in the matter of approving an owner's agreement for Kroger Drive Home Road.
So moved.
Second discussion.
Morning, Rob Riley, Chief Deputy Engineer. As you may know, Kroger is building a new store off of Home Road, this is just to the east of Salma Parkway, west of the CSX Railroad. As part of that site work, Kroger will be building a new access off of Home Road, which is still in the unincorporated portion of Powell, and so this agreement spells out the inspection fees and the construction bond they will file for that work.
Okay, vote please.
Vote on motion 25-505, Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Resolution number 25-506, in the matter of approving right-of-way work permit summary sheet.
So moved.
Second discussion.
We have fourteen utility permits for you today, these are all pretty typical utility installs.
Okay, vote please.
Vote on motion 25-506, Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
It is ten o'clock, so if Mr. Lewis would like to start the hearing, or past ten o'clock, we can start the hearing.
Okay.
Public hearing for consideration of a petition from the Orange Township Board of Trustees requesting vacation of a portion of Parkway Drive in Orange Township, Delaware County, Ohio, under the special procedures of RC 5553.045, and it is 10:13 a.m.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to the public hearing for the consideration of the vacation of a portion of Parkway Drive in Orange Township. There's a sign-in sheet circulating, and we ask that you please sign the sheet to indicate your attendance. The Delaware County Board of Commissioners received a petition filed by the Orange Township Commissioners for the Delaware County Board of Commissioners to adopt a resolution ordering a portion of Parkway Drive in Orange Township, Delaware County, Ohio, be vacated. We will first hear a report from the county engineer, after which there'll be a time for questions from the board, the board will then hear from any interested residents that wish to testify. The board will acknowledge receipt of any written testimony before hearing live testimony. We will first call all those wishing to testify in favor of the vacation, we will then call all those wishing to testify in opposition to the vacation. Before testifying, you'll be asked to take an oath. The board will close the public hearing after all testimony and evidence has been presented. After listening to testimony and the report of the engineer, the board will determine if the vacation requested in the petition would be for the public convenience or welfare. We can proceed, thank you, Rob.
All right, well, good morning again, Rob Riley, Chief Deputy Engineer. Our office sent you a report last week, I trust you have received that, hopefully had a minute to look that over. At the pleasure of your board, I'm glad to read that report, or if you'd like, I can summarize it, I don't believe there's a requirement to fully read the report.
I think you could summarize.
Yeah, summarize would be good.
Okay, I will go with the summary. Orange Township has petitioned Parkway Drive, about a fifty-foot-long segment of Parkway Drive for vacation, and the revised code provides a special authority for township trustees to vacate certain roads, though the authority extends only to unimproved, uninventoried public roads, and these are commonly unapproved streets that were dedicated as part of like a historical town or a platte, we have seen a number of those over the years where the roads were never built. My understanding of the authority, and I would certainly defer to your general counsel, Eric Kostetler, as to whether this is correct, but the authority under this section of code is limited to those streets which are not inventoried by the higher department of transportation and thus are not used to distribute motor vehicle license registration fees to townships, because each township receives a appropriated share of vehicle license fees based on road mileage, and now all those road miles count towards how much they get. So Parkway Drive is inventoried by ODOT, and thus, my reading of the revised code is that this is not eligible for that particular section of code to be petitioned for vacated or vacation. With that said, your board does have authority to initiate a petition, or excuse me, initiate an action to vacate either in response to a petition or by your own initiation. With that said, this, what has been requested, this would essentially result in what I would say are two dead-end public road segments. The revised code, 5553.02, basically sets forth the minimum requirements for public roads, and that is for, if a road does not extend or connect to another road, it has to serve, excuse me, at least three businesses or private residences in the first five hundred feet. This vacation would result in each of those road segments not meeting that particular requirement for if you were to establish a road, because there would only be one private residence and one existing business, respectively, on the west and east side. So with that said, we don't believe that vacation of this segment meets the statutory requirements, I will add that we are also of the opinion this would not serve the public welfare by essentially eliminating one of the two access points to the West Orange Edition subdivision. I understand there are some residents that have expressed the desire to have only the one access point off of Orange Road, however, it is our opinion, having multiple points of access is important from a public safety and convenience standpoint, certainly if the one access point is blocked for any reason, through an accident or anything else, construction or otherwise, that would leave really no other way to get in and out of the neighborhood short of constructing some sort of emergency access point. So with all of that said, it is our opinion that this petition should be dismissed, and you should not initiate any further action.
Yeah, Rob, just a real simple question, what would happen to the fifty feet of abandoned roadway, then, vacated roadway?
That portion would be vacated, the title to the thirty-foot strip that goes to the center of the road on either side would pass the abutting properties, an easement would be retained for any public utilities that are currently there, and so they would be legally allowed to keep their facilities there, but the title to that underlying ground would pass the abutting properties.
So it'd be up to the property owners to tear up the street and plant grass if they wanted to, or whatever.
That would certainly need to be handled in one way or another, whether, if your board did proceed, there would need to be some form of barricades installed to basically prevent private trespass and provide for some sort of turnaround for maintenance vehicles at a minimum.
I just want to make sure that I understand your position, then you are in opposed to the petition that Orange Township trustees passed?
We are.
Okay, all right.
The, so you have both legal concerns, that the process hasn't complied with ORC, and then also just the basic access concerns.
That's correct.
Okay, we do have.
Thanks, Rob.
I did want to let the board know, and you have a copy, we did receive some written comments from Timothy Raffeo, R-A-F-F-I-O, on this issue, so.
Right, yes, we do, we have that, okay. All right, any other questions?
No, right now.
Okay, we have acknowledged the receipt of Mr. Raffeo's letter, and right now, I would like to call all those wishing to testify in favor of the vacation, and if you could give me your name, address, and I'm going to swear you in, actually, before that, so whoever wishes to testify, please come forward, I think Mr. Ringel stood up first. And I will swear you in. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to address you this morning on this request for this vacation for Parkway Drive. My name is Mike Ringel, I live at 2818 Cannon Circle Drive in Lewis Center. I also have the pleasure of serving as one of the Orange Township Board of Trustees members. Also in attendance today are my other two co-trustee members, some of whom may be speaking, but I'd like this opportunity to address this petition to you and explain some of the history of why you have this petition before you and why it's important that you approve it today. So what ultimately brought this petition before you was concerns from the residents of the Parkway neighborhood. I believe you've also received petitions with approximately forty, over forty residents from the neighborhood that have expressed a desire to have this limited portion of Parkway Drive vacated. There has been commercial traffic on Parkway Drive from pickups plus and other commercial businesses along the 23 corridor, and a zoning application came before the Board of Township Trustees to rezone the parcel south of Parkway Drive for commercial purposes, so not only would Parkway Drive in the near future be servicing this one residential property in an existing and an existing commercial business, but it'll also be servicing a specialty commercial grocer to the south along with commercial outlots, two commercial outlots which could hold, hold multiple small businesses. So there's significant potential local commercial traffic that will be affecting Parkway Drive. And the desire of the residents that was then forwarded to you through the board was to vacate a limited portion of Parkway Drive to preferably allow for safety-only access to Parkway neighborhood. But we understand that through the vacation, that that portion of Parkway Drive would get dedicated to the, the neighboring properties, that they would be responsible both for maintaining that property. So being able to ensure that there would be emergency-only access, it's not a guarantee, but that would be the hope. The Board of Trustees would have likely already granted this vacation, but the revised code provides that it's the Board of Commissioners' responsibility to grant this vacation. We appreciate our partnerships with the county engineer's office, but some of the comments that were made on the advice of legal counsel, we submitted this petition under the particular code section. So we are on, the majority of the board is under the opinion or of the belief that this is the proper process to go about getting this vacation to help these residents. We've also talked extensively with the county engineer's office about the potential extension of Pacer Drive. And I think that is also a concern the county engineer's office brings with, you know, the potential granting of this vacation. We have worked through multiple potential iterations of how an extension of Pacer Drive south from just west of the Nationwide Children's Center could go through and potentially connect to Orange. The zoning application that was approved for the specialty grocer south of Parkway Drive allows for commercial local traffic, an easement through their parking way, that would then connect down into Pick-Ups Plus on the west side of their property, which they also have granted an easement on their property for local traffic. I am of the belief that that is a more appropriate redirection of potential traffic. Should Pacer Drive be extended, then routing a arterial traffic through Parkway Drive, which has been one of the proposals from the county engineer's office, with that residential neighborhood being established since the 1950s. So they certainly were there much longer before this development took place on 23, and we're trying to help not only facilitate requested growth from the property owners for commercial development, but also to maintain the residential neighborhood to the best of our ability. So for those reasons, I respectfully request that you approve the petition, and I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Where, where is Pacer Drive?
Pacer Drive is just to the west of the Nationwide Children's Medical Center there, just south of Gooding, in between our fire station 361 and that corner property.
Okay. So that would connect into Parkway, is what you're saying? The plan is for it to connect into Parkway?
There have been proposals, yes.
Yeah.
With the US 23 corridor study, that study had proposed turning Parkway Drive into a cul-de-sac, taking right-in, right-out access away from US 23, and then the thought there would be to potentially have an arterial road similar to Green Meadows on the east side of 23. But that's where Pacer Drive is currently. And we might be trying to pull up a map.
Yeah, Jennifer and Rob are, are recessing there. Is, is there a plan to extend to the south, a second road?
From Parkway to Orange?
Yeah.
I think long-term, there have been discussions about an extension to make that kind of arterial corridor. The question is, how do you get from Parkway or from Pacer all the way down to Orange? This parcel south of Parkway Drive is going to be developed in, into several commercial businesses, so it's not ideal for commercial traffic flow through, but it, those parcels have easements granted that would allow for that. And we think that that's a much better, I think a majority of the board would say that that's a better direction for that commercial traffic than trying to route it through the residential neighborhood.
Okay. Excellent. Well, I will see if there's anyone else in favor. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to testify in favor of the petition? Yes, sir. And I will swear you in. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
Where am I supposed to put this?
You can give it to our public clerks. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Doyle Hartman. I live at 150 South Parkway Drive, and I thought I might just go first, maybe set some background information from the, from the residents' perspective. A lot of the residents weren't able to be here today because of work schedules, but we do have a, a number that have come out. So I saw you had a copy of the plat. So you would recognize that the plat was, was done in 1950 for our subdivision, and obviously the area was a little bit different 75 years ago. And we have currently, the pavement width there is, varies between 16 and 16 and a half feet in width. There are no sidewalks, and the shoulder is approximately about two feet wide. So we got narrow road, narrow shoulders, and no sidewalks. And looking at the county standards for right now, the, I think if that street was being replatted or redesigned, it would be a minimum pavement width of 20 feet, minimum shoulder width of eight feet, with two feet of that being stabilized with aggregate, and then also a minimum four-foot-wide sidewalk. And Mr. Riley can speak to that if I misread anything from the county standards, but, so basically, our, our existing road or lane there is woefully small compared to current design standards. It was fine when it was all rural and there were no additional traffic rather than just residents, but now with the ongoing development, there's more pass-through traffic. There was a, a traffic study that one of the owners right on the, on South Parkway coordinated, and we had a recording device on a mailbox, and they recorded during one week in June 2024, about a year ago roughly. And at that time, the report showed that the eastbound traffic was 768 vehicles in one week. The westbound traffic was 1,099. So that comes out with an average, AD, average daily traffic, average vehicles of 267 vehicles per day on this little 16-foot-wide road. Now, if you look at the Delaware County Standards Manual, they recommend for making estimates of the traffic that might be on a road, they, they estimate that using 10 vehicles per day per residential unit. And along that part of South Parkway, there's roughly 12 to 13 residents along there. So if you do the math based on the county standards or estimates, you would anticipate only about 130 vehicles a day along that portion of South Parkway. But we just, I just mentioned, we currently had, at least a year ago, it was 267 vehicles per day. And that is more than double what one anticipates based on the county standards. And currently, I think as Mr. Ringel already mentioned, we have Caliber Collision and Pickup Plus that have a lot of traffic being diverted through there, that I'm estimating is probably the basis for that doubling of the current average traffic. Anybody coming westbound on Orange, or eastbound on Orange Road, if they're going to Caliber or if they're going to Pick-Ups Plus, it's a very easy cut-through, because you're right there at Caliber, and then you can't make a left turn off of 23 into, if you're going northbound into Pick-Ups Plus. So some of those guys will come through our development, turn right on the 23, and then they can turn right into Pick-Ups Plus. So what we're been thinking is, okay, we've already maybe doubled our average daily traffic in this area just based on two businesses, and as it was proposed, or as already mentioned by Mr. Ringel, we have a grocery store and restaurant combined coming in, and then we got, I think, four or five, I don't know how many different retail stores coming in. So if we doubled it with two, we're, we're anticipating a whole lot more traffic, maybe five times, I don't know, six times the traffic that we have right now. And the other thing that is a concern to us, I mean, we, we welcome the developer coming in, he has every right to do so, but the thing that's with Caliber and Pick-Ups Plus right now, they work basically week hours. And it's, you know, there's Monday through Friday, eight to five type of thing. So we have a lot of residents from our subdivision and even from neighboring subdivisions who would like to walk through there, particularly in the evenings. And so we're concerned that when the grocery and the restaurant come in and they're open later hours, weekend hours, there will be more traffic on those times when we have more pedestrians using the road. And with no sidewalk, it's, it's difficult, particularly if you're, you know, people are walking around as families with bicycles, baby buggies and all that, and if you've got oncoming traffic, sometimes it's not a good place to get off, particularly since you don't have any kind of a shoulder in most areas. So we, we are concerned about, obviously, safety. For, for those of us who like to walk around the block and neighboring residents who like to walk around the block, and so we're just concerned that when we have higher traffic for the new development, there will also be higher pedestrian traffic and then less safety involved. So that's pretty much the heart of my, my thoughts on that, so obviously I'm in favor of the resolution.
Okay. Yes, okay.
I appreciate your time.
Oh, thank you.
I really appreciate it, too.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. Yes, sir.
Good morning.
I'll swear you, I'll swear you in.
Absolutely.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
So help me God, I do so swear. Hi, my name is Steve Jones. I'm a fairly new resident to the neighborhood. I live at 270...
Your address.
I'm sorry.
Just your address.
270 South Parkway Drive. And I'm live two houses down from Doyle, who was just up here speaking.
Okay.
And it's be a real challenge to basically, and I don't really want to repeat the points that he has made so cogently and correctly, but one of the things I would also like to point out, that in my attending one of the trustees, the Orange Township meetings, the owner and developer of the property that is going to become a restaurant, grocery store, multiple resident, multiple retail, perhaps some office use, is on record, on record as stating that they have no objection to what we want, what we as residents want to have happen to this street. They have no problems, and, and I consider them to be barred from basically trying to assert that this road should not be vacated. We want it vacated. We need to consider the safety of our families that live in that neighborhood, maintaining the quiet nature and peaceful nature and character of our neighborhood, and we just don't need all that traffic coming through. And the other thing that I'd like to point out is that a lot of that additional traffic that is a result of Caliber Collision, it is tow trucks coming through, pulling a lot of vehicles behind them. That is a lot of the character of the traffic that's going to Caliber Collision, and that's a lot of weight on a very old street, and we just don't need the additional traffic coming through. So despite the recommendation of the county engineer, we really, really need to see this approved and our, our neighborhood kept quiet and peaceful and safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Jones, before you, I got a question for you. Where, where is the proposed restaurant and grocery?
It's immediately, it's, it's basically the south, south side of Caliber Collision, and it's...
Okay. Across Parkway to the south?
Yeah, the south, yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's just on the south side of Parkway.
Good. Okay, Rob's got it highlighted there. Thank you.
Show us more of Parkway.
Yes.
On that, please.
This is Parkway Drive.
Okay.
The portion being requested vacation is basically that, that section right there.
Okay. That section then to the north?
Essentially from that property line to this driveway, about 50 feet in length.
Oh, okay. Okay. Very small.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing, sir, let me get everybody in, and then I can call you over again. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the petition? And I will swear you in. Thank you. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Thank you. If you could state your name and address.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Lena Skroka, and I live on 250 South Parkway Drive. I am here to express support for the proposed vacation of a portion of Parkway Drive due to the impact of increased commercial traffic to our residential neighborhood, especially as it relates to the safety of our children. With the recent approval of nearby commercial and land development, we anticipate a significant increase in construction and commercial traffic through our residential streets. This poses serious risk to the safety, comfort, and overall well-being of current residents, especially our children. Every day, several children walk along the road or wait on the road for the bus, for the school bus, often alone or in small groups. These children have no sidewalks to use and no street lights to increase their visibility. During the winter months, many are out as early as 6:15 a.m., when it's still completely dark and visibility is further impaired by ice or snow. The addition of construction vehicles and commercial trucks will only heighten these dangers. North and South Parkway Drive were not designed to support commercial traffic. It lacks basic infrastructure such as sidewalks, adequate lighting, and road width to accommodate increased volume, especially from larger vehicles. Even if businesses currently limit operations to standard hours, there's no assurance that delivery trucks, dumpster services, or other commercial traffic won't begin earlier in the day or expand over time. This uncertainty poses unacceptable risk in a residential setting. Beyond safety, there are economic and quality of life concerns. Heavier traffic will accelerate wear on the roads not built for such use, resulting in higher maintenance costs. Furthermore, increased traffic and safety concerns can negatively impact property values and erode the residential character of our neighborhood. Vacating a portion of Parkway Drive would help protect our neighborhood by preventing business-related traffic from cutting through. It would help ensure traffic that is routed onto more appropriate roads like State Route 23 and designated commercial access points where the infrastructure can handle it. We all want thoughtful development, but it must be balanced with the safety and quality of life for the people who already live there. I respectfully urge you to prioritize the safety of our children and take meaningful action to keep North and South Parkway Drive a safe residential space. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the petition?
Hi.
Hello, Lisa. I will swear you in. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Thank you. You may proceed.
Okay. I'm here to speak in support of the petition. My name is Lisa Knapp. I live at 228 Hideaway Court, but I'm here in my capacity as an Orange Township trustee...
You may proceed.
Okay. I'm here to speak in support of the petition. My name is Lisa Knapp, I live at two-two-eight Hideaway Court, but I'm here in my capacity as an Orange Township trustee, a role, this is my, the end of my third term. Thank you for allowing us to speak at this hearing. In Orange Township, we welcome responsible development. We're very excited to welcome several new businesses to our township along Route twenty-three that we recently approved. However, over the past few decades, increased development has had collateral damage for some of our oldest communities, and in this case, it includes the West Orange subdivision, which was developed in the nineteen-fifties. These residents' quality of life, safety, and the peaceful environment of the neighborhood is at risk. It's very difficult to see the beauty and peace of this neighborhood unless you actually drive through it. It's a very unique and beautiful neighborhood. So the residents from West Orange subdivision first approached us during the Orange Township rezoning process for a large grocery store, restaurant, and out parcel uses, which are going to be built directly east of the West Orange neighborhood along Route twenty-three. The development will be about thirty-five thousand square feet when built out. This development will create a large increase in traffic from both construction vehicles and from customers to these businesses. In fact, Google Map routes drivers through the West Orange subdivision now. These residents were concerned about the safety of their children and their community. One may argue that this is only about forty homes, but these homes and the residents who live in them, their lives and quality of life matter to Orange Township trustees. The residents have been working with us on a solution for this for several years, and we have spent many hours on this. To ensure the residents were serious, I asked them to submit a petition with every resident's name and address supporting the closure, which they provided. I wanted to make sure that there was no one who objected to it, of course. There are about forty homes there on one large, approximately half to one-acre lots. This is one of their, Orange Township's oldest neighborhoods, so it was not planned the same way as we do with other areas. It's owned far residential and is located directly adjacent to a strip of property along Route twenty-three, which is a very busy road, a strip of commercial property. The roadway is extremely narrow, I think sixteen feet or so, and is not safe for excessive through traffic. I believe the street is about the same width as my street, and I live in a cul-de-sac, so it was never designed to take a lot of heavy traffic. There are no sidewalks, and about thirty children who regularly live and play in that area. Residents have testified that vehicles speed and also frequently drive off the road into their yards, creating ruts in their actual grass. The traffic during construction, including heavy dump trucks and other equipment, will greatly harm the township roads and cause a great danger, especially to the children. Not only can this cause harm, but it will also cause potentially millions of dollars in damages to our township roads, which we would be forced to then repair. This situation has been such a concern to some of these residents that several of them have actually sold their long-term homes and moved away from the area, they were so worried about it. They did not want to do that, but they did. I did ask the developer, there have been concerns about emergency access. However, we are able to provide emergency access to vehicles from Route twenty-three in case of an emergency using bollards. This is something we have done several times in other areas of the township, not for road closures, but when we needed a secondary access. Additionally, I asked the developer on the record, and they stated they have no use for the West Orange residential roads, and their traffic will be coming off of twenty-three, so that would not affect their business. This is a very unique situation that is unlikely to occur again in the future, possibly once, but like I said, it's such an old neighborhood adjacent to commercial development. We are always concerned about setting precedence, but I do not see this happening in the future, and in fact, I cannot recall this request having ever been made during my over twenty-five years working and serving at Orange Township. We recognize that commercial development is desirable in order to provide services to residents and also additional tax revenue to the township and to the county. However, the people who live here are longtime Delaware County and Orange Township residents who deserve to be protected from excessive through-traffic and the hazards that it brings. I would like to note that I do not believe the township actually received the engineer's report, so I have not had the time to review that thoroughly, which I'll do after the meeting. I don't think any of the trustees or administrator have received that until today, so I will be looking at that. And then last, as I think Mike mentioned, there is a concept from the engineer's office of running Pacer Drive all the way through the residential, the road to the east, and I am strongly against that, that there will be traffic all the way from Home Road coming all the way down to Orange Road, and that could be thousands of vehicles a day. So that, if that happens in the future, I think all of the trustees are against doing that, or trying to, or at least, at least two of us are, maybe three. But there has to be another way to run an adjacent road past that, because I can't imagine thousands of cars coming from the, all the subdivisions to the north, all the way down to Orange Road, using a residential street. So I strongly oppose that as well. So, and last, I would respectfully request that you vote to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
No.
No?
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in favor of the petition? All right, Mr. Hartman, you're on. And you're already sworn in.
Thank you. Again, there was something I didn't want to mention, and I forgot to do so. I was wondering if we could, we have the GIS up there, I was wondering if we could zoom out a little bit to pick up the neighborhood immediately west of our subdivision? Yeah, very good. I just want to address something that Mr. Riley mentioned, and maybe you can help clarify it in my own mind. But he was concerned about having only one access point into our subdivision. And I think with Ms. Knapp was just mentioning that we had originally conceived, at least there would be bollards allowing emergency vehicles to come through the vacated portion of Parkway Drive. I don't know how the legalities of that would happen. But if you look at the subdivision immediately west of us, you can see there's only one access point coming into that entire subdivision. There's a platted portion coming out to Orange Road, but that's never been constructed. There's only the one access point going north that serves all those homes. Now, potentially, an emergency vehicle could wade its way through the grass and everything and get back to that subdivision off of Orange Road, but it wouldn't be very possible. So I know Mr. Riley mentioned about there are certain conditions under which you can have a single access. I personally didn't follow that, so maybe he can elaborate on that. So when I've been thinking about this, I've been thinking about that neighborhood, and I thought, well, they got only one access point. If we just have one access point, but at least if we had an emergency access coming through that vacated right-of-way, I would, personally, since I live right there on the corner, you know, any fire trucks coming through, it'd be nice to have them be able to get to my house. So I just want to point that out, that there is a neighborhood just west of us that has only one access point. I know it's not favorable, that's why we wanted to have, like I say, still have emergency vehicle access through the vacated property, if that's, I don't know if that's possible or not, but thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else, well, let's, I think, Mr. Riley, I'm going to have you come up and just address Mr. Hartman's question. I'm sure we'll have some more questions for you, though.
Yes. Thank you, and I appreciate the comments. We are at the engineer's office certainly understanding of the concerns about the commercial traffic going through the neighborhood. That is, that's been expressed, and we fully understand that and agree with some of those concerns. I think what we wrestle with is the tools we have available as a county. We have to operate within accordance of the revised code. What has been petitioned is what I would characterize as a bit of a sludgehammer approach to address what is a concern about cut-through traffic. This would essentially vacate a section of the road that, to my knowledge, there is no, basically, when a public road is established, it is the duty of the township to keep it open and in good repair. That is prescribed in the revised code. What Mr. Hartman, I believe his suggestion was converting some portion of Parkway Drive to an emergency access. I'm not exactly sure how that happens. That, and I think that would have to be a discussion with legal counsel as to whether there's actually a way to do that legally within the existing public right-of-way. What I can tell you, Mr. Hartman addressed the neighborhood to the west, that portion, I'm going to pan over that. So... That portion was set aside as part of the condition of plating that neighborhood for the future construction of a public road to access that neighborhood. That, so that is available for use. There is, I believe, a highway easement or a road easement, more accurately, through that property that would allow for that in the future. The point is, that was never constructed or improved, and so it is not something that has to be kept open and free of obstruction like an existing public road. So I think what we're talking about is what I would characterize as a symptom of the problem, not necessarily the problem itself. The problem, I believe, is really the lack of having a parallel road. As Trustee Ringel, Trustee Ringel mentioned, an extension of Pacer Drive south to Orange Road, I think, is ultimately what we have discussed to some level with the township, also with the developer, is the solution to the problem here. And I think the difficulty with that is finding a corridor that serves everyone's interest. And all, I don't know if I'm able to draw it here, but... This is by any means a road alignment, but I'll just connect the ends from this point to this point. And that red line could be east or west, but I think essentially that's what we're talking about, is a connection from Pacer Drive down to Orange Road to service those businesses. I think that's ultimately the goal of what we would all like to see, both the township and our office would like to see that happen. The difficulty is the seventy-nine Parkway development, which I had highlighted earlier. We have had discussions with that developer about their willingness to set aside property through their development so that that red line would not essentially be where it is now, it would be shifted further to the east, towards twenty-three. The difficulty with that is that would render their development unusable. It would use up too much of the developed proportion of that site. They were, in our discussions with them, unwilling to do that. As you know, we as the public have authority when property is platted to make certain development, or to make certain requests or exactions, requirements for that property to offset its impact. However, those requirements have to be legal, they have to be proportional to the impact. There, that, this is an issue that gets litigated all the time, it's been litigated over and over. I don't want to cross the line into Mr. Hoestetler's territory, but certainly there are some guiding principles on what is a reasonable requirement for a development like that. And I don't believe we were of the opinion that requiring a road be constructed through the middle of that development was reasonable, and basically something that we couldn't ask the developer to do at his own cost. So this is a complicated issue. What I, I think our opinion is, what has been petitioned today is, what I would say is maybe valuable in initiating the discussion, but I don't believe it's the correct solution for what the, what the problem truly is. And what I don't want to see happen is this portion vacated, and us regretting that later when we need to potentially construct this parallel road at some point in the future and not be able to have access to US twenty-three. So that's our, that's our perspective in this. I realize this is a lot of information that, we've, we've had a number of conversations, so I'm up to speed certainly more than you are. Hate to throw this all at you today, but glad to answer any questions.
Okay. You know what, I will continue to take any other testimony, and then we may call you back, too.
Well, I have some questions for Rob, if we can wait.
Okay, okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify in favor of the petition? Okay, Mike?
If I may, since we have the map up, I'd like to draw a line through that subdivision as well that shows where we currently have easement accesses, to, you know, provide a picture to what I talked about earlier in my testimony. So we...
You can probably, if it's easier, we can try and move it back to the podium, it doesn't matter. Whatever, if it works, we can try and move it back to the podium.
Well, just to do that.
We could say.
Just for additional reference, there's currently right-of-way that was highlighted north of Parkway Drive. We're requesting the vacation for that portion of Parkway Drive that's just south of that easement. Preferably, as small a strip as possible to allow for the installation of safety bollards. It's my understanding that with the advice of legal counsel, the township does not have the authority, I believe to Engineer Riley's earlier comment, to close township roads per our discretion, that if we wanted to install safety bollards, we have to actually vacate a portion of the road. We can't just close it. And with the seventy-nine Parkway Drive development that you'll see south of Parkway Drive, there are currently easements proposed in that development, and then also at Pickups Plus, which is that southern commercial business that you see there, that would allow for commercial traffic to flow through that red area. So the vacation that we're requesting would not affect the ability for commercial traffic to, at some point in the future, flow through those red highlighted areas, which would ultimately direct it away from the residential neighborhood, which is the purpose of the vacation.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify in favor of the petition? Okay. In a moment, I'm going to turn and ask those wishing to speak against the petition, but I'm going to call a five-minute recess, and we'll be back here at any time after eleven oh five.